Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, meeting of April 26, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Franklin is excused. Whitworth.
Here.
Hollenbeck. Here. Kumbir.
Here.
Schaefer Weiss.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Want to welcome trustees Brunig and Hollenbeck. Thank you. Looking forward to having your contributions here with the board. If we can now stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proof of posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, the Hometown Bay. I apologize, it was on the village website. It was off and it's back on now. And it was also sent to all board members and to the email list.
Okay. It seemed like we properly posted the meeting. All righty, we do have an invited guest this evening. I'm going to ask Wisconsin State Senator John Jagler to come up. And tell us about what's going on with the legislature. John, if you can introduce yourself.
You bet. Thank you very much, trustees. Really appreciate being here. I'm State Senator John Jagler. I'm just finishing one year in the state senate. I took over for a special election from Congressman Fitzgerald to fill out his term. And that was one year ago this week, as a matter of fact. Previously, I had served in the state assembly prior to that. I'm from Watertown. Have a small family dog treat business there, also a real estate agent, and raised my three children from Watertown. So currently up for reelection again this November because that's when Fitzgerald's term originally ended. Currently in the legislature right now, the both houses have adjourned, pending any, you know, special matters that have come before. It's basically time for everyone to go back, reset, and run for reelection again. There is still work being done in Madison today. The Joint Finance Committee was busy with something that I'm sure you're going to be affected in a positive way with some transportation funds. Federal funds have been flowing into the state of Wisconsin at an unbelievable rate. A lot of these are ARPA funds. These are part of the lightest transportation package. And the way the process works is the DOT presents its spending plan, and it goes through Joint Finance Committee for approval and sign-off. It was $285 million more dollars in addition to what was previously budgeted for. The plan went through basically as is. The legislature, the Joint Finance Committee did remove some funding that was set aside for Bike Pass, focused it more on local road aids. $83 million is the local road aid amount in addition, again, to the budget that went through. And then another $60 million, I believe, for bridge improvements to speed them up on their timeline. A lot of the bridges is, you know, they get graded out for years to plan. This will get some done earlier and start the process rolling on that. Legislative study committees are in the works, ranging on anything from trying to figure out how to boost up EMT staff, local firefighters, local volunteer firefighter staff, how to, you know, any, looking at what other states are doing. Those are generally non-binding committees. They're just, let's gather some information. Let's get some of the stakeholders in and go from there. So that's what's going on right now in the legislature as we've adjourned for the session. That was a session, honestly, with split government was frustrating from basically everybody's standpoint. The governor proposed, his budget proposal had a $1.3 billion tax increase. We instead took that budget, basically threw it out and started over, built it from ground up, and resulted in a $3.2 billion tax decrease, which he signed. Very few Democrats voted for it in the legislature, but he signed. Thank goodness, he signed it into law. But it's an interesting, it's an interesting politics, as you know, and even on a local level, is a very interesting game. You have a billion-dollar tax increase proposal gets turned into a $3.2 billion tax decrease, and he's, his ads say he cut tax. He did, he signed it. But it just shows a very interesting dynamic. The governor vetoed more bills than any governor in history this year.
Can you not get into the politics?
Sure.
And just please report on what's going on in the senate?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, like I said, I don't think I'm being unfair in saying that.
It's fine. I just think, I mean, I think what we wanted is just to find out what's going on. I loved what you brought up about the fact that there may be some road dollars.
Yes.
So that's very interest of the village. Is there anything more like that that might be of interest to the village?
Well, I mean, you're looking at, a lot of the focus was on local road aid in the past budget. And as you know, in the L.RIP program and going through and things like that. Some of the other things that we are looking at doing, you know, again, it goes back to, you don't want to give me to get into the politics of it, but we submitted, in hearing from local governments, hearing from local businesses, all local businesses trying to find people to work. Everybody looking for help wanted ads all over the place. We tried to pass some restrictions on unemployment. One of the things that we heard repeatedly was, business owners will know this, the ghosting of interviews. In order to continue with your unemployment, you have to say that you're applying for work. You go in, you apply for work, you get, submit that you have a job interview, and you just don't, people we're hearing over and over again have not gone to their job interviews. It's a waste of everybody's time. We tried to pass some restrictions on that, and those were vetoed among the many vetoes. So, as I said, it's a frustrating time, and I say that, I'm sure, on both sides. And that's not a political statement, that's reality. That's the reality of split government. That's what Wisconsin voters wanted, and that's where we're at right now. And it'll be an interesting reset coming in November to see where voters go from there. But, as I said, it was an interesting, you know, coming out of COVID, a lot of the ARPA funds, it was deciding, and I'm sure you have some relief now on what you can do with a little more flexibility. I'm sure you probably appreciate that. And I know all the local governments that I talk to do appreciate some of the relief on that.
We do. Okay. Questions, trustees? Ted?
Well, the last year, we've been dealing with the new solar farm that's coming into Cambridge.
Yes, sir.
And it's coming right up to our borders. They're not taking into consideration our extraterritorial zoning, which has been out there for 20-some years. And I think the legislature has to take a look at it, and also the senate has to take a look at it, protecting small villages and townships from a private company coming in and doing whatever they want to do.
Yeah.
And that's the way it is.
No, there's, you know, this isn't the only one in the district going in. It's an issue we're facing all over Wisconsin as these grow. And it's definitely something that's going to be on the agenda. As you know, right now, restricted law, I mean, the legislature's role is basically nonexistent here. And perhaps it's something that we will revisit.
And any of the small laws that are out there, they just overlook them. PSC doesn't want to deal with it. So, I think we need to hold their feet to the fire a little bit more also.
All right. Okay. Any other comments? John? Well, John, thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Sure. And again, I appreciate the opportunity. I will please allow our office to be a resource. Sarah from my office is here. She handles constituent relations. She is, anytime you folks here have an issue dealing with state government in any level, please reach out to us. It's amazing, it's the role of any legislative office, is to be that conduit. If you're not hearing back from an agency in a prompt manner, you would be surprised. You know, call your local representative, call your senator, and let us be that conduit because the phones seem to get picked up faster when we call. So please, don't hesitate to do that. Call us on any issue.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
About what kind of trending are you seeing when it comes to volunteering and the fire and EMS?
Oh, it's terrible.
And what's being done about that?
That's what we're trying to figure out. We had that legislative study committee, I mean, we, there's only things so much the legislature can do. We've tried to incentivize by passing tax breaks for gear and things like that. But other than creating a separate taxing authority to fund and increase, you know, stipends on a pay, it's very difficult, and it's not just Wisconsin. It is a, it's something that...
Is there anything we can do on a local level?
No, I mean, support your local, I mean, that's one of the things that's going. Even just gratitude, small steps of gratitude that seem to have gone away over the years. And then as the older EMTs and older volunteer firefighters step out, that next generation right now is just not there. And I'm not, I don't know how to fix that. And I don't know if anyone has an answer. It's troublesome. It's something we're going to face.
It's costly.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's trying to encourage that next generation to be, have that selfless community pride.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do you bottle that?
Boy, if I could.
Thank you.
Okay. John, thank you very much for being here.
You bet.
Responding to our request that you come and give us an update at the state senate.
Absolutely. As I said, please don't hesitate to call our office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Going to move on to public comment. And this is an opportunity for people to come up whether your item is on the agenda. If you have anything, you've got a couple of minutes to introduce yourself.
I got a question to the president. Since we're fairly new to it, can you explain what the rules are for public comments so everybody understands?
You know what? I'm going to defer that to our legal counsel.
Yeah, so this is the time for comments for members of the public. If they want to talk about something that is either on the agenda or not on the agenda, it's all fair game as long as the conversation remains civil. And so what we do is set a time limit, often depending on the number of people who want to speak. But the reason that we have the public comment period is because that is the chance for members of the public to participate. And what we really want to have happen is for the rest of the meeting to be for the village board members. And so this is the chance.
What's the expectation of a response?
There is, thank you for asking that question. There should not be an expectation that this is a question and answer session. This is a chance to plant a seed with the village board members about issues that might be on a future agenda. But thank you for asking that.
And the time limit?
Two minutes.
All right, thank you.
One clarification, too. And this will be up to the president. Certain things, today we do have the ATV UTV ordinances where we asked them to come to us with information. So do we want to, there is opportunity to allow, when an agenda item is on the docket, that the people we have asked to bring us information. So I know there's a number of people here on that. Do we want them to speak during public comment or to present to us when we get to that agenda item?
I think on that, I'll ask that those that are not directly involved with the ATV activity, they're more just general observations, they speak at the... Come up and give us that. If you've got something technical that you can share with us, we'll be talking about that here later on with our agenda. And then we can ask people that have that, you know, experience.
So we would ask for, like, two of the ATV representatives from two of the people from the ATV club to present during the agenda item so we can have a back and forth with them if we need to?
Yeah, and kind of as a little background, a couple of meetings back, the board did request that a group bring us information to share with us. So that's why I make that distinction.
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
And then Chrissy, you're going to keep time?
Sure.
And just do us a favor. Let us know when the two-minute mark has been reached, as well as put your hand up. All right? Okay. Do we have all the rules of the road here? Okay. Everybody that would like to speak, this is your time. You can identify yourself.
Brenda Newman, 716 Kansas City, New England. I worked a little bit late. I was unable to send off this letter since we haven't gotten any information coming in to or getting answers for the slope, the grading, the drainage, and everything else. So I've kind of been doing my own research. And this letter is back from 2016 to where the sloping and the grading and everything asphalt in our vineyard area is coming into play. I have decided since, we've been coming to this meeting since we moved here, since we started having issues, and we've beaten our heads on the wall with no resolution, no answers, no responses. It'll be on the next meeting. We're going to have to come up with a separate board meeting for this or a separate group meeting for this. So I've decided to, I'm going to take upon myself to contact the engineering company, who is, the company that you guys had, which is Town and Country Engineering. And I'm also going to try to contact Steve Strauss. Mark was before your time, which is in partaking to this letter of when the grading and all the issues came into our vineyard area. Another thing, has anybody contacted Vulcan on our cleanup?
We talked today, Lisa?
Yep, again, this isn't back and forth, but yes, we have.
And are we planning anything?
So we'll just be listening to your, we'll be listening to your comments.
No, this has actually got to be resolved.
Because we actually know.
It's been brought up, and we hear from you that, hey, we're going to listen to you, but guess what?
Nothing's happening.
So here's what happens. The board members get to ask questions. If the board members have questions of Lisa, they're welcome to respond to your comments with that.
Here's your ordinance, Jane. 8.56.080. Building waste, demolition waste resulting from remodeling, construction, or removal of building, roadway, sidewalk shall be disposed of by the owner, builder, or contractor in the building, with the building materials. There you go.
We pay.
Please enforce it.
We pay HOA fees, and nobody is doing anything in our vineyard to do anything.
Two minutes.
Okay.
So.
All right. I'll circle back on this.
All right. Well, we have a cleanup on Saturday, and we'll send the village, we're going to collectively do a cleanup. So on Saturday.
That is just responsible.
What would they send to the village? Why?
All right.
Why would we pay?
Can you identify yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Borkart, and I live at 209 Olson Way or River Street. I have a list of questions. If I don't get through them, that's fine. I'll send them to those of you that have the email for, and you can share them with everyone else. One, how much was spent on legal fees for cash-in on solar? Two, why did the commission shut down the opposition and refuse the grant? Three, I understand you gave an explanation of the numbers I presented previously, but afterwards I found out I was looking at the wrong numbers. I was looking at what was owed, not our tax base, which is found under revenue. How do you explain the loss of tax revenue when no buildings have come down and only one building has been changed from commercial to residential, and we have consistently put housing up? Four, how long do you intend to raise our taxes? $95,000 a year? Since there was no cap, put on the vote that was originally a no vote and passed in recount by one vote? Five, how did the distillery pass inspection when it was without a testing reservoir or sewage meter? Six, in 2017 and 2018, we spent over $1 million each year to maintain water due to problems based on regular maintenance not being done, like emptying water towers to clean them, which would cause greenwater. Where's the money that was spent on water maintenance leading up to 2017? Seven, is it legal for you to make residents responsible for bills of a private company? Eight, why is the winery not being forced to uphold their end of the developers agreement? Meaning, where's the $2 million winery? Nine, how did you come up with $11,000 for the distillery's payments? I was told it was set up like a TIF, which means they should be paying what their tax payments would be. I know of a house in Cambridge that pays $11,000 in property taxes a year after our 10% tax hike. So how's the distillery that has spent $45 million to be built?
Two minutes.
But paying $11,000?
All right. Thank you. We've got it recorded.
What years were you talking about for the budget, the tax base? What years?
2017 through 2020.
And when you say tax base, do you mean?
The tax revenue. Like, there's the government tax revenue and then the business tax revenue. Both of those show losses every single year, except for in 2018, we had a gain of the government tax revenue. But otherwise, there's a loss every single year.
Okay.
And then last, I'm requesting that you guys put me on the email for the agendas. I put my email on here, so I'll send it to Mark.
Send it to me, and I will add you to the list.
Thank you.
Mr. Ma, Stans, and Go. Hello.
Hello.
Family, how are we today? A couple of things I wanted to hit on again. The litter for Vulcan in our field, they were also talking about it too. So still an issue, more accumulating, not a lot of changes there. Some direct responses to Becky's statements. The distillery tried to work with you guys in finding an accurate evaluation for the Rick House property development. We were shut out of doing that. We've also been trying to get agenda items for the last six months, or four months, last four months on the incentive payments. So that's just our response on what we've tried to do to be partners in those things. Also, water and sewer, pretty disappointing. A lot of the things that we thought were true about the water maintenance plan, like things not happening, things not being recorded, employees not showing up, which we literally define as lack of transparency, continued. And with just the agenda items coming up today, there's an opportunity for the board to assign members to committees. And I think it's really important that we assign people with a willingness to look critically at systems, experience with the systems. And I think that Mr. Brunig, if he's interested in the job, would be great on the water and sewer board with Ted, Mr. Kumbir. The relationship between the distillery and the village has degraded to a point that is, it's hard to really explain. It's pretty comical. It's hard to explain. And it's really unfortunate. And so, you know, hopefully, we can start putting our best foot forward and treating each other with respect and honesty and dignity in following the things that we said and the words that we said. Because you guys voted things in twice relating to water maintenance plans, and frankly, they weren't adjudicated, they weren't administrated, they weren't done.
Two minutes.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay. Dean?
Yes, thank you. Dean Lund, Cambridge, Wisconsin, here. I want to thank Quad County Runners for being here to present information for item number nine. They did present to me with one docket that I didn't get in there. I'd like to get it here, which is basically a copy of a potential ordinance writing and wording that can be used. Of course, that'll be your decision. But I want to thank you guys very much for listening to the Quad County Runners, and I do support UTVs that may present itself to our village, not just for entertainment and enjoyment, but also for commerce, possibly getting people to come into town just to buy a gallon of milk. A lot of my clients do have units that can come here and buy a gallon of gas or a gallon of milk. So hopefully, you're supported on item number nine. Thanks.
You did all the work for it. You did all the work for it.
I'm making it easy for you guys. I got to thank Quad County Runners. This is ordinances that are used at other locations.
Thank you, Dean.
Hi there, Kayla Sipple. I just have two quick comments. One, I would encourage the Economic Development Committee to continue meeting. I see that there is committee appointments on the agenda today, so I hope to see any appointments at that committee. And then two, it'd be great to get an update on the Welcome to Cambridge time. That was something that was going through Economic Development, and they haven't met since, I think it was January 16th, if I recall correctly. So love to get an update on that in the future. Thanks.
It's like a zombie. It just won't die.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up? You've got a couple of minutes. This is your time before we close the public comments.
I just got something. If there's a response from Vulcan before Friday, can somebody let us know before we take our entire day on Saturday to clean up?
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right.
So, sorry. In order to let you know, does Lisa have your contact information so she can do that? Okay. All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Do you all want to volunteer for time on Saturday? Since nobody's responded to Vulcan, we have the EWO, 10 o'clock Saturday morning.
All right, thank you. Anybody else here for public comments? Okay, fair warning. We're going to close that portion of the meeting. Let's move on. Approval of the consent agenda. See what it includes. Board minutes from April 12, Personnel Committee, April 19, Water and Sewer, April 19.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
I'll second.
Discussion, any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Carries? All right, let's get into reports. Got a couple of things. I want to thank Jay Weiss about two weeks, three weeks ago, we planted a whole bunch of trees. And Jay organized this with Dane County. And there must have been, I was down there, I want to say at least 25 people. I know there was one little boy trying to get a merit badge for Boy Scouts, and he was helping out, and his dad was there. And a lot of trees were planted, I think primarily in the vineyards development, but there were some throughout town. So want to thank Jay if we can pass that on. I also want to make a note of thank you to Joan Bean, who is the Director of the Library. I was informed that there was a resident here in town that does not have any computer accessibility. No phone, no laptop. And they needed to attend a funeral service. And Joan was able to set this up, I believe it was a Zoom meeting, and this individual came into the library. And it's just great to be able to see our, you know, our programs working in alternative ways. So that was, I was informed of that this week. This may not be, I'll hold off on it. I know where I'll go. So that's my report for this week, and we'll move on. Library Board.
Been doing some statistics that show that library checkups are gaining, but they're still not back to the pre-COVID 2019 numbers. We're continuing to work on the Director's Job Description. Several of us attended a Equity and Inclusion webinar that was extremely helpful. So we're looking at education requirements for a grade-three library. Recently had National Library Week. The theme was "Connect With Your Library," and the library will be using this theme throughout the year. There's a giant Outdoor Connect 4 game that's been purchased and used for the theme. That's about it.
Okay. Any questions for Chris? Okay. Chris, thank you. Village Board Updates. Lisa?
Still continuing to finish up the election paperwork. Have a little more to go on that. Still working, finishing up with the auditors on the PSC report that will be filed shortly, and some additional information. They're looking for, first request for payment has gone into WIDEC for the, you know, main project that a grant was received for. So working with both WIDEC and the developer on that, as the village has the pass-through for that. Had some open records requests and numerous other ongoing projects.
All right. Any questions, concerns for Lisa?
So I have a concern that we have a lawyer attending every single one of our village meetings. I think... I think we definitely need legal, but I think spending two hours, the dollars to have them spend at least a two hour meeting twice a month isn't a good use of our village dollars. So I would like to, at some point, as soon as possible, have the board take a look at why and perhaps no longer have Jane, although I know she's done a great job, have Jane no longer have to attend these meetings.
Okay, why don't you bring that up around when we get down to questions to referral staff or future agenda items?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for Lisa here on what's going on?
I want you here, so.
Okay. All right, let's move on then. Bills. Chrissy, what's the, what's the damage?
First round of bills were 26, 26,747 dollars and 15 cents. Second round that was done was 221,317 dollars and 57 cents with a grand total of 248,064 dollars and 72 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
All right. And discussion now about the bills.
So where was the second run in here? Because, so I could take a look at.
It was emailed, and I do apologize, I don't, I did it late this afternoon.
Okay, so that.
But the second round is always emailed.
Okay, because, yeah, sorry.
It's a big chunk.
No.
The big chunk is for debt payments. So you'll see the 150 grand, it's on the summary there. That shocked me too, because I didn't see it the first round.
All right.
I'll get it for you.
They normally go out earlier in the day, but they got away from.
All right. I too, Paula, saw the amount that we are paying to legal, and so you're going to bring that around. There was a bill in here, I want to say for about $10,000 for the month of April. So it was substantial. And $9,990.66, so we want to talk about that, but that was.
I did have one question on the stereo cycle spend. It looks, it looks like the amount charged to, so it was, it's for shredding. So it was spread them in three counts, and it looks like one of the accounts, it was twice as much. Did we have two buckets?
No, well, that is, the village was half and water and sewer was half. So village was one, the other half is split in half, so water is a quarter, sewer is a quarter.
Got it, perfect. All right, thank you. That answered my question.
So you'll see that in a lot of bills if it's split, water and sewer, it'll be half, a quarter and a quarter.
From out of the water bucket and half out of the sewer bucket.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right, any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin Whitworth.
Yes.
Holland Bet.
Yes.
Kumbia.
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss.
Yes.
Brunick.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay. Passes. Let's move on. Unfinished business. Discussion on possible action regarding the ATV, UTV ordinances. So those of you who are wishing to speak, if you could come up, I would ask that you identify yourself so that we know who you are.
I'm Phil Blaska from Lake Mills. I started this Quad County Runners ATV Club about seven years ago. We're just about 200 members, including business members as of last year. We're in four counties. We got 26 townships, six villages, two cities. In Jefferson County, every county road in Jefferson County we got, and Dodge County is going to pass, sounds like May 17th. 2333 state statue allows us to, allows us to use roads in the state. And it's a town road, you got to go to the town, village, to the village, and that's the law, that's the way they got it set up. Some might ask why, why they allowing ATVs on, on roads? And, but they did, and it's growing extremely fast. The reason is, is tourism dollars, a tremendous amount of tourism dollars, outdoor recreation, and the economy to the state of Wisconsin is, is, as Ann Sayer, she's the State Tourism Secretary for the State of Wisconsin, says, just for example, snowmobiling, which is similar, brings in an estimated $1 billion to the state economy. And as of, there's only 220,000 registered snowmobiles in the state, and there's, as of now, five, almost 500,000 registered ATV, UTVs in the state. And we're, snowmobiles are maybe, I don't, in Dodge County, they never even opened the trails last year, but still a billion dollars. This ATVs are used 12 months out of the year. So, and twice as many machines, and also the dollar of the machines are probably twice as much money as these snowmobiles are. So a tremendous amount of money comes into the state. In our club, about 90% of the machines are, are UTVs, and we got two of them parked out front here. There's some, there are some ATVs, we don't have many in our club. Most of the ATVers, like what we call riding the dirt, and they go up north.
Usually stick to the trails.
They stick to the trails, exactly. And there's only, the state of Wisconsin, there's only 2,200 miles of state trails in the state, the whole state. And according to WAFL, Wisconsin ATV Association, there's over 40,000 miles of, of roads. And I got to believe there's a whole lot more than that. These are, these machines are equipped with standard seat belts, they come that way. The machines are designed that if you don't hook it, it doesn't go. Some people, some people will bypass it, but it don't work out good for those people. They, they have a roll cage, the noise level can't be over 96 decibels, so they're quiet, that's by law, compared to a motorcycle or pickups or semis. They have, you have to run your headlights and taillights. Many of them have turn signals on them. And the average age in our club is 52 years old, 52 years old, yeah, you're younger, but we made her a president. We got one guy in our club, he's 79 years old, he has four Gators. Two of those Gators have those four, air conditioning, heat, full cab, radio. He's got four of them, he's so much into the outdoor. I'm 69, and I, I still just, well, a year ago, as of October, there's only 459,000 machines. And so from October till now, what, 40, 40,000 more machines that quick, they're selling fast. And this is, according to the DNR, it's one of the fastest growing family recreation in the state of Wisconsin.
I do believe that there is more UTVs, ATVs registered in the state of Wisconsin than there are motorcycles.
There is, it's less than, it's less than 400,000 registered motorcycles in the state of Wisconsin. And I want to get to that, too. 16 Wisconsin counties are allowed, 100% of the roads, 16 of them are, they can use 100% of the county roads. And for example, Jefferson County, every single county road in Jefferson County is open to ride, every single one. There's 16 of those that are 100, there's 26 that are 90% open. We just want to get in the village. I think the village should be automatic throughout the whole state. Then the town roads and then county roads, there are some state roads in Wisconsin. Nine states throughout the United States actually lets you register the machine to run on all their roads except for the interstates. There are nine of them, that's the UTVs. Then as far as fatalities, in 2019 statewide fatalities, motorcycles killed, it was 82 pedestrians. I don't know what they're doing on the roads.
Vulcan?
53 pedestrians were killed. Bicycles, 14. We built a bike trail over 26, they don't use it. I'm paying for it, I can't use it, but 14 of these guys are killed. In the 2019 ATVers, there was four, and this is only, there's a whole lot more that got killed, but these are on legal road routes. And there was four ATVers in 2019. And the UTVs in 2019, two were killed on legal road routes. But both of those did not have seat belts on. And, you know, you don't put your seatbelt on, you, you realize, when you get on a motorcycle, you know the risk when you take off that something bad could happen. But, but they still ride, and.
Or with riding without a helmet.
Right, right. And we've been saying, there's no way anybody can say that riding on a UTV is, is not safer than a motorcycle. It's, it's just, it just stands to reason.
But they're legal on every road.
Motorcycles no on the interstate, yeah, and, and they're getting killed. But, but UTV, the guys that want to go out, and I don't, my wife won't let me ride a motorcycle, I don't like sliding my ass on asphalt. When you ride a motorcycle, you dress for the slide, not the ride. And those guys know that. And they also say with age comes a cage, and the guys that don't want to ride motorcycles, they get these things here, it's a whole lot safer. They still enjoy riding. So, and, and actually in 2020, and actually 2019 and 2020, there's been no fatalities on UTVs when they're riding on a legal road route and they had their seat belts on. In 2021, there was four that got killed, two of them did not have their seatbelt on. One missed a curve and went into a creek and drowned it. And the other one hit a tree. He didn't have a seat, he had a seatbelt on, but the machine caught a fire. But that was, yeah.
Do you have any more highlights here? I mean, I don't want us to get into.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us? What highlights?
I'm going to open it up. I have a question, I'll start with, encourage here.
I read everything in the packet, so I feel, based on the information I got in the packet, and thank you, Dean, for pulling this together. I feel, I have no questions at this point.
I have a question, I have a couple of questions. Can children as young as 12, are they allowed to drive these?
No.
Very good question. No, we, in our orders, we, the state doesn't have, first of all, you have to be 16 to drive a UTV. You can be younger to drive an ATV. In our club, the state does not have a requirement that you have a driver's license. Our club wants that, every single one of our towns, except for, I think, one, I didn't put that in there. We kind of been promoting that if you pass this ordinance, that you require that they have a driver's license. So if there was a drunk out there that doesn't have his license, we had a case that that happened. We really want you to have a driver's license.
Well, you brought up the drunk driving, I mean, that's a huge concern. My understanding is state law regards ATVs and UTVs as recreational vehicles. So drunken driving would be handled as a noncriminal citation. And it's issued by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. So there's no record, there's no drunk driving. So that's a huge concern, given the huge numbers of drunk driving that occurs in Wisconsin, and it could be somebody who can't drive legally, and then they use this to get to the bars. So that's a huge concern.
They have to have a license, you know, if they still got their license, that's a fact. The snowmobiling, it doesn't go on, the only thing it really doesn't do is it doesn't go on your, it's still point 08. If you read that, I don't know if you.
I did, I read it.
Right, there's penalties in there from the DNR on, on drinking, even on your bicycle, if you run a stop sign and you're drunk. The only thing it doesn't do is go on your license, and that's correct. The state, I know they've been trying to pass that, they haven't. But you still, if the person's driving drunk, he can still get stopped and pulled over and get a pretty good fine. It just don't go on his record.
By the DNR, but not by the police, I think.
Doesn't go on driving.
Well, I, I don't, can a police, if I'm riding my bike and I'm drunk and I run the stop sign and he stops me and I'm drunk, I, I always thought he can give me a ticket.
I did too.
I think.
I'm pretty sure.
The police may not be able to, to ticket them for like a DWI, I'm not sure on what the rules are there. There are plenty of other laws that they probably could apply, like public recklessness or public nuisance. Or, yeah, public intoxication. So there's all sorts of things that would apply to them if someone was, if the police did pull over a UTV or an ATV.
I've been told even if you're walking and you're, you can actually.
That's, isn't that like drunken public?
Right, right.
Okay.
Public intoxication.
Chris?
Yeah, I got one.
Well, I mean, let me finish with Chris.
Um, let me just see if there's anything else. I guess a big question I have is why in the village? Why is it important to have it in the village if this is, you know?
Of all places, that's number one, Wisconsin Dells. I don't think there's a city in the state that's busier than Wisconsin Dells, and that's wide open. October 20th, 2020, and it hasn't been a problem yet. And, and they got the right, you guys got the right, if there ever is a problem, to take it away, and it's been working. Wisconsin Dells, I mean, everybody's been to Wisconsin Dells, and it blew my mind when I saw that. We got, we got two cities, Waterloo, I don't know, four years now, Giuno, Wapon, that's been passed. Because we're talking slow, you know, 35 miles or 25 miles an hour, that's of any place, that's where most of the businesses are. That should be an automatic, in my opinion. You know, we're not talking Jefferson County roads, going down a county road if somebody's coming up on you at 55 miles an hour. So it stands, either smaller machines, they take up less room. In my opinion, the state needs, if this is growing so crazy, so fast, that it should be an automatic, all cities, maybe under 35,000 or something, I don't know, cities or villages, then towns. Because we really don't want to ride county roads, we need them to connect. And this, matter of fact, earlier before we got here, to connect into Town of Christiana, we, for us, a route coming through Cambridge here is, would really help. And then, of course, the people that live in this village want to get out also and enjoy what we have.
So coming from a, I have a family, I have a four-year-old. We used to do motorcycles, we got out of motorcycles, it wasn't safe anymore. I was afraid to have my husband on the back of the bike, I was scared to do it, with just me and him, because I, you know, I have a little girl. So this was, and then during COVID, everybody was at home, you're looking for stuff to do, and it was something to do together and that was safe. And then, so we, we bought the UTV, and we take her out, she loves it, she has a blast. But like Bill was saying, we're going around town, or we're, you know, planning a ride or whatnot on the roads that are legal. We don't have anywhere for, like, to stop for lunch, or if we needed to get fuel.
We're going to move on.
We don't have that.
Can you identify yourself? I know Bill did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm April Burmeister, I'm Town of Christiana.
She's our club president.
Yeah, I do.
We got, we got one.
Okay, I was just elected, he's like my mentor, so I'm learning.
We got one farmer, he's got in two, two years, 8,000, 8,200 miles on his machine. Goes, it just, it's so handy. And, and it, one other business guy outside of Waterloo, his wife takes it to shopping in Waterloo. But 8,000 miles on his machine in less than two years, but they're, they're just, it's a smaller machine, so easy to get around. They have to have a license plate on the back, so if there's ever a problem for the cops or anybody to, and the registration sticker on each side, that's a law.
All right. Ted, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had a question. Are you required a certificate of insurance?
We require that too.
Yeah.
We want, yes, you, you should, I think that's on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Right, that they're insured.
Because it just makes sense.
Absolutely. Some of these are $35,000 machines.
Right.
Yeah.
And liability, yes.
Yeah.
If I can tell you one story, if you, if you, give me a second. There's a sup, is that okay? There's a supervisor in Jefferson County, if you have trouble with common sense, don't advertise, especially in a public meeting. But this guy says, I, he knew it was going to pass, and he was against it. He said, I went, I know what you guys are doing, you're drinking, they're out there drinking, and that can't be good. So I want you to take your machine home before it gets dark and come back, how he said this, with your pickup or car and finish. So now, when I'm leaving that bar at midnight, and he says I'm drinking, and maybe I'm drunk now, and I come home and I mention to his wife, he's going to wish I had an ATV instead. I can't imagine anybody saying something so stupid, but he did. He had a public meeting.
President McNally, if I could ask just a couple clarifying questions on the draft ordinance that's proposed, maybe for Mr. Lund. There's, so one of the provisions we've got in Section 4 here that you're proposing would be that these, I'm looking at B there, the ATV, UTV routes shall have a speed limit of 35 miles or less based on posted speed limits within the village. Is this proposing a separate speed limit for, that just applies to the ATV, UTVs? Or you're just saying we make sure that no, that all of these routes have a, a uniform speed limit, and that's the maximum?
They use the template from the Quad Runners.
So.
And that 35 mile an hour speed limit, that's just.
That's the standard.
So I think what, what that would be, like, if they were driving on Highway 18 by the high school, I think it's 45 miles an hour as you're coming in there, that, that, the UTVs and ATVs would have to travel at 35 miles an hour.
So it's a separate one for ATV, UTVs?
Yeah, yes.
As I'm thinking that, it'd be the.
As I'm thinking that, it'd be the primary spot in town.
I think that's like the, I was thinking as well when I was looking at it, yep.
No, no, guys, the 35 mile is really confusing. It's, there's an Act, 2017, Act 87, that 35 miles an hour, it, there is no state speed limit, uh, from the state, other than what the road is.
No, no, but you can still, it's within the village's authority to set a separate one.
Okay, you got it, right.
And it wasn't clear from this language whether that was just a separate one, just for the ATV, UTV.
That's on not to exceed speed limit, 35?
Well, you can't, no, you can't, right.
Just for the ATV, UTVs, and not for the cars.
Well, a car can't speak to 35 either, no.
Well, they could, they could, if, if the speed limit is 45.
Well, then we can't go there. See, you only have the, the village has authority over any road that's 35 and under. It could be a state road or a county road, and normally.
But that's not how this is written. This is, this is written, this, this is what applies to all operators and passengers. It's a speed limit of 35 miles an hour. So it doesn't, it, it doesn't automatically change the speed limit.
No, that should, well, then that shouldn't be in there.
Okay, well, I was just curious. And then also, it says here, signage will be provided by outside funding?
Yes.
And I wasn't sure what that meant.
That's us.
That's us. It's us. It won't cost you guys any money, put it that way. We pay.
For the signs.
Yeah, yeah.
And to have them put up?
Unless you guys want to, we got a lot of towns that want to, but they're cities. You can, but we will.
All right.
Thank you.
And we just got this tonight. So my question to you, Jane, is this has not been reviewed by our own law enforcement, has it? We just got it tonight.
Nobody, yeah, we just eyeballed it just now.
All right, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to have our, um, actually, I would like to make a motion to approve UTV and ATV riding on all roads in the village of Cambridge. And I would like to have the staff work with legal to create an ordinance for the, per, using the sample that Dean provided for us in this meeting.
I'll second that, if you add on, uh, also staff in lawyer and law enforcement. Work together.
So, so, so do it.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, we got a motion second, uh, to move ahead then. Further discussion, seems like.
What happens if law enforcement disagrees with it, outright disagrees with it? Do we take their advice on it, or? I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I don't know, what, how, how do you handle that if that happens?
The ordinance is gonna have to come back to the board for approval. So at that time, there can be the input from legal and from law enforcement as the ordinance is presented.
And it's fairly common too, to have either a public hearing or, or even a referendum on these, is, is our experience.
Would that occur?
So it could occur at the same meeting, you know, in conjunction with the meeting when the ordinance comes.
If the order is so desired.
That's one option.
Would we have to make a separate motion for that?
Yeah.
Yes. That's my concern. I feel like this is really being fast-tracked, and I, and I understand this is fun, and I, you know, up north with man-laws, my daughter, we, we did it too. I have nothing against it. It's just, it's, it's, it's coming up pretty quickly, and I'm just wondering how this fits with, I mean, it's gonna kind of change the tone of the village potentially. I still am concerned about if the police, you know, we haven't heard a lot about law enforcement and how they feel about this. The drunk driving still is a concern to me. I just feel like, it would be great to have more public input about this before we just fast-track this along so quickly. What do business owners feel like? They might be all for it. But I feel like, you know, I'm here to represent the village, and I don't know that there's that much that we've heard yet from villagers and businesses.
All right, Ted, did you have anything, any comments?
No.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Can you repeat that, please, the motion?
Approval on all roads in the village and have the staff work with legal and law enforcement to draft the ordinance. So in a clarification, it wouldn't take effect until an ordinance is passed.
And then, right, and, and it wouldn't actually take effect until the signs are up.
Right.
Exactly.
So what specifically are we voting on tonight?
So right now, it would be for us to work to draft an ordinance to bring back before the board for final approval, a separate ordinance, if you so desire, it could be, or a, a second motion. Upon approval of that, could be to request a public hearing if you want that. But that would be a separate motion.
Well, I would like to request a separate motion then for a public hearing.
Get this motion first, and then we could.
All right. Anything else? Okay, let's go with roll call.
Trustee Whitmer.
Yes.
Holland Beck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss.
Yes.
Ryan Eck.
Yes.
Franklin McNally.
Yes.
Do you think you'll be able to have that ordinance at the next meeting?
Meet with the police and everything? Next.
Yes, I'm just trying to think if there'd be a notice requirement to publish for a, if, if we go with a public hearing. That may push it back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I think with those notice requirements, it's probably a safer bet if we would say.
Sure.
Yeah.
If, if that motion passes.
If that motion passes. Yeah. And that's why I said, if we go with that, it would, you know.
Yeah. I, I just, I would just like to, it, to make sure that, that this is a priority and that we, if we're, if we're gonna do the ordinance, that we do it as quickly as possible back. So i, if, depending on what happens with, if, if there is another motion, either, either the next meeting or the following meeting. So, so within a month, we should have an answer.
Mm-hmm.
All right. I guess the, the big thing is, it's got a, law enforcement has to be able to, to definitely size this up. And then so should legal. We, we need to have that. They're willing to do the signs, but we need, before we get into that part of it, and I get that we want to keep it moving, but, um, you know, let's make sure that we've got this all buttoned up before anything is, uh, we're, we're bringing it to the next step here.
And then the other thing, in this, sorry, in this sample, it does, it does say Village of Cambridge, Jefferson County. It is Jefferson and Dane County, so it wouldn't be just the Jefferson County roads we're talking about in the Village of Cambridge. We're talking about Jefferson and Dane. Only because I live in Dane, and quite frankly, if this passes, I, I might be buying myself a UTV.
All right.
A second motion may need to be made then regarding public input. So I will make a motion for there to be some public input, so business owners and villagers, yes.
Okay. All right, we have a second. I'll second. I think we, we need to have that. I want to make sure that this is fully discussed, we understand it. You know, we've, uh, whatever, the drunk driving and how old you have to be and, and, you know, the speed limits. I want to make sure that we are doing this right. So I'll, I'll make the second.
Create that ordinance to make sure we do it right.
There are some, if, if this is the right time, there are also some ongoing duties that the village will have to maintain. So even if an outside group is putting up the money for the, for the signage, this is one of those things where we don't get absolute governmental immunity. People could sue the village if we, if we fail to maintain safe conditions, like if there would be a missing stop sign, for instance, and we don't correct that. It, we don't have absolute immunity, so it would be important that we would commit the resources. It would be the village's role to make sure that those signage and those kinds of things would stay there.
But we'd have that problem, that, the example you gave, we'd have that problem with a car as well as an ATV or UTV.
A motorcycle.
A motorcycle. So, so the fact that it's a UTV or ATV is no different.
True. Just my job to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
To share risks.
Yep, that's good.
Could I just make one point on the signs? The signs are, these signs are strictly informational signs, not regulatory signs that we would know.
Yeah.
But, but they do definitely, and, like, the absence of a, of a sign definitely creates a liability risk for the village.
Yeah, but not an informational sign, no. It can't, it can't.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yep.
All right. We got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, can you go back, Lisa, and, and read?
It would be a motion to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance.
All right. Okay, um, I'll do the same thing. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holland Beck.
No.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss.
Yes.
Ryan Eck.
I think the public needs to have a say, yes.
Franklin Whitmer.
No.
McNally.
Yes. Okay, so that carries. Dean, I see your hand up.
Should we, one would be in date?
No, we don't have one yet.
It would probably be the second meeting in May.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if we're, we're trying to get it within the month, then.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, I don't normally do this, but I'll.
Just a real quick thing, on page 33 in the book, it's all about alcohol or alcohol and drug thing.
Okay. All right, thank you for bringing.
Look at this too.
All right.
Page 48 as well.
48.
48 talks about the law enforcement, who can, who can do that.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, April. You know what we're up to, so we're moving it ahead, so.
Thanks a lot.
All right. And, uh, thank you for bringing your machines by. They're very impressive out there.
It was kind of like.
Mark, you got a question?
Uh, yes, sir.
One last thing, I'm gonna ask why, as far as UTVs in town, um, your business owners, uh, last weekend, there was, uh, three of us on a ride. And we had businesses on a ride that were planning for May 14.
Yeah.
That I had been to, there was two of my had been to, and, you know, we're there with our, our kids are with our friends, our families and stuff, but we're making our days based on, hey, we haven't been in this area, or it's legal to go to this area.
Right.
So we're going to these areas. And when we're out, you know, we're running gas, and when we're at a gas station, we're, you know, the C store for water and chips, and kids always want something. So that kind of helps your life.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chad, appreciate it.
All right, uh, let's get into new business here. Uh, we'll start with the, um, discussion and possible action regarding Arbor Day proclamation. Lisa?
Our annual Arbor Day proclamation, um.
Do we want to read it?
I can read it, some.
Go ahead, Lisa.
So whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Martin proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and we are honored to be celebrating and acknowledging the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city, village, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and trees are a source, source of joy and spirit, spiritual renewal, and whereas Cambridge has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 14 years, and has received the Tree City USA Growth Award, and Cambridge desires to continue its tree-planting ways.
Now therefore, I, Mark McNally, village president, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the village of Cambridge. I urge all our citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community and forestry program. And then Paula, I think you really liked this last one, so I'm gonna let you read it.
And, and further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Dated this 26th day of April, 2022. Karen, we're gonna expect this is gonna be in the paper in its entirety, correct?
I can get you a copy.
Or maybe not.
I'll send you a copy, Karen.
Okay. All right, okay.
It's in the packet.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this? Some moved. Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we have Arbor Day proclamation for April 29th, 2022. Okay, let's move on. Discussion and possible action regarding, uh, appointments to committees.
Nope.
No.
No, no, no.
No May.
Oh, no May, I'm sorry.
No mo May.
No. No May.
No mo May.
No mo May.
Okay. The no mo May. Lisa, what's the highlights on this one?
The village first did this last year at the request of, um, Trustee Rose. His partying meeting, he asked that we do bring it up again. You can see from it to encourage pollinator-friendly lawn care practices, um, as we're moving from winter into spring.
I don't think, were there any complaints about yards? There's only one that I have seen, they haven't mowed it, but that's because the daffodils are in full bloom. And they're all over, it's not too far from your house. Yeah, there's chickens in the backyard, but you don't ever see them. It's just all these daffodils, it's on the terrace and on the yard, and it looks pretty cute.
So the, the bottom line is we don't enforce our ordinance during May.
We don't enforce the ordinances, and oftentimes, the growth isn't there until.
Later.
Although we'll see this year.
It probably will.
Last year, there were no complaints.
There are no complaints, okay. Do we feel like we want to, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, endorse, approve, uh, the no mo May proclamation.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
And just for the record, if you decide, as a homeowner, that you still want to mow, you can mow.
Yes, yes.
Or, 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 as I said, maybe a portion of your yard leave to no mo May and mow the rest of it.
Can I ask a question? So you just voted in not enforcing the, not enforcing that, but are you guys still gonna mow those properties?
Yes.
I don't know. Probably.
I just want to remind you guys specifically of the deal we have with the rickhouse, we're asking you not to mow back there, if you are gonna.
Isn't that area fenced in, the one that, by the rickhouse, where you, the, the area that you didn't want?
The ditches, uh, I believe that in the, uh, the development agreement, you guys are responsible for the maintenance of the.
Ditches.
But, uh, given my intense interest in apiary sciences and our large collection of these ethnics and go, we would formally request again, as we had before, granted this request, that you not actually mow those areas. And, uh, in response to that request, we planted clover in those areas, which is actually a no-mow crop.
Nice.
Which also acts as a, a pollination source. We did accommodate, and we're, but thank you, Lisa, for working with us on that. We did accommodate, and we're, but thank you, Lisa, for working with us on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, now we can go on to appointments to committees.
Can I just make an, uh, something, I, I don't know that this is, 'cause the third page doesn't look like it was updated, fourth page? Maybe it's the fourth page.
Wyatt Rose on there?
I mean, yeah, the fourth pa, the fourth page doesn't look like it was updated at all.
It was. Wyatt Rose would be staying on as a citizen member.
Okay, so a bunch of these have, the term ends on four twenty-two.
Oh, so the date just didn't get updated.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
Yeah, I can change the dates, sorry.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, on the next page, I see the dates, too.
So audit and finance, Eric, you're chairing it.
Oh.
And Paula, asking you to be on that.
Yay.
I would be on that with you. Board of review, um, we've got Chris, Paula, myself, first and second alternates, Eric and Chuck. Licensing, Chris, you're chairing, Paula, you're on that, and I'll join you. Personnel, Chris, Schaefer Weiss, you are chairing that, along with Ted, continuing to serve, and Chuck Franklin. Public works, um, let's see here, we've got Eric and Chris and Chuck will be chairing that. Police and fire, Ted, you would be chairing that. Chris, you would be on that, and Chris Schaefer Weiss would be on this. President Pro Tem, Paula, you are the designee. Village forester, there isn't anything acquired, but Jay Weiss would continue on. Water and sewer, we've got Ted, we've got Chris, Steve, and then there's a vacancy, but, uh, let's see here, water and sewer, stormwater board, and those are members for the CO-
Sorry, I didn't put chair on there. The chair of that committee. I'm sorry, I was doing this late Friday.
Well, President, who's the chair?
Who, which?
Water, sewer, stormwater board.
Must be Ted or Chris.
Yeah, it's either Ted or Chris, but I cannot, I don't, I don't remember who we had on that. I, I, I set these, but I have consideration from Lisa.
Had considered changing it, um, but that's your call. I'm sorry, I didn't put it on here, like I said, this was late Friday. Today, we were still working on this.
This was, this, that's right.
Yeah.
Wanted Chris Brunig to chair this. Yes. Want you on there, Ted?
Well, I know.
Okay.
We'll be working on it.
Know what I'd do without you, Ted.
All right.
After next year, you can figure that out.
Okay, I apologize for not having that on there, Chris. Plan Commission, uh, number of individuals. Eric Whitwer, you would continue to chair this. I am confirming with, uh, two individuals, just to make sure that they are still interested in being on this, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I don't want to go into that at this time, but, um, Paula Dean had definitely indicated interest, so good to stay on there, and Dan Gronemus. Zoning Board of Appeals?
There's enough for a quorum for that?
With the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 there hasn't been a problem on that one. Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, three-year terms, three citizen members. Blake Solenberg, Teresa Lenihanard, and Craig Carpenter. This hasn't met that often, correct?
Correct. This is only when people request a variance that they need, so it is a-
All right, okay, so we've got Jay Weiss as a citizen, uh, alternate, and then Griffin Robertson, James Lesser, Lisa. Joint Commissions, uh, the TIF Review Board, Eric, you're still there in the public.
Was nothing before that.
Okay. All right. And Cable?
Does that make good sense, though? If I'm Plan Commission, should I be part of the TIF also? Is that not enough separation of duty? Plan Commission recommends to the board-
They do recommend to-
A TIF. I don't want to be getting a second crack at it.
That is true. I hadn't thought of that.
Yeah.
Is there a different board member that?
I did it before, I can do it again.
All right, thank you, Chris. Cable, uh, we have Wyatt Rose on here.
Yep, as a citizen member.
All right, and then Chuck would be on that, and Ted would be on there. Joint Police, um, we have Ted Kumbeer as the chair, Chris Brunig would be there, as well as Chris Schaefer Weiss. The Joint Cambridge Oakland Planning Committee, um, Chris, you and I, and then I'm going to propose that we have Gary Ratman. He's from the town of Christiana. He is on the Cambridge Oakland Waste Water Commission. And so I think he'd be a good one to continue on, on this committee, just to, that has to get approved by them as well. But that way, there's two Cambridge, there's two Oakland, and then there's Gary, so he's not from either community. Used to live in Christiana, uh, he lives, uh, over by Madison now, but he comes out of, out to town here quite a bit. I have a high regard for him. Economic Development, um, let's see, Paula, you would chair this, and then we have Christiane Lang.
So, so the open vacant position there, Kayla, are you a business, small business owner?
Yeah, let's, co-owner of South Central Land Case, I've expressed an interest. Yeah, okay. Let me follow up on that. Um, there's gonna be two things on here. Currently, our ordinances do say you have to be a resident or a business owner, as we're right outside of town. Jane and I have talked, we've discussed with Mark, we could amend the ordinances, especially since the chamber is no longer to extend for this committee for businesses within a half-mile radius of the village. So, um, we were proposing to make that ordinance change at the next meeting, at which time you could be then appointed.
I just have a quick comment about that, um, no problem at all, but I would like to point out that there is a current, um, I'm not sure of what you call it, business member of any committee who is, their business is literally one block away from mine, and they are also not a resident of the village, so.
They live in the village. Yeah, yeah. So there are, like, the banker works at the bank in town, does not live here, you know, so we discussed it, thought that was the best way we could address this, by expanding it to business owners within a half-mile radius to bring more people into the mix.
Christiane Lang lives in the village?
No, no, but she's a business owner in the village. So everybody currently on the committee is either a business owner or works-
In, in village proper.
In village proper, or is a resident of village proper.
You're just slightly beyond the village limits?
So is, I think, a business risk with, um, complete biochemical social, is he a registered architect?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Stonefish.
Yeah. But he is a resident, so that's where he's currently on, so.
All right.
So we would have to amend, then?
So we'll, we'll do that as, can you, we'll add that to the agenda? Do you want me to make a note of that?
Yeah, and we have it on our, um, our list. And as we're talking about it, as the next committee, as the historic preservation, looking at also just amending the ordinance, um, we don't have a registered architect in town. So to amend the ordinance, um, to say, you know, if one of these categories, which are set by ordinance, aren't available, an interested citizen could take that place.
So that'll be an ordinance change next time, too?
Yes.
Okay.
And plus, they never match.
No, they haven't.
Or like the case of Kevin Maringer, who's the banker, who doesn't live here but works here, we can, we could seek out that registered architect that's within our surrounding municipalities, right?
Yeah, so we can discuss that language exactly how we, um, yeah.
Because I think in the past, Ted, you've mentioned that you, you really want a registered architect for that particular group, not just somebody that plays them on TV.
Yeah, either architect or an engineer.
Right.
Not somebody who slept at a Holiday Inn Express last night?
Okay, well, that's Historic Preservation Committee, see what the composition of that is. Other committees, I would continue to serve on the Cambridge Area Fire Commission.
What's the COWC? Why is Steve Strass listed as a board representative?
He is, let me see where.
On the fourth page.
Why is Steve the board representative?
Our ordinances were changed where the, the village has two people, it can be a board member or a citizen, one of them. So he is the second village rep on, um, but our ordinances do allow for it to be, um, board member or citizen member, so.
And one of those reasons, Steve, when they were, uh, planning, uh, the, uh, the sewer plant down here, he was on the board at that time. So he, he has a lot of, you know, knowledge and stuff like that, and it's good to draw on that everywhere.
And I can change that heading to village representatives.
Yeah, I think Steve does a good job there.
And the same thing with Gary Ratman, he's also on COWC.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, um, Eric, you'll, uh, you'll continue on here with the representation for the Dean County Cities and Villages.
He's just starting, you were the, before I, um-
I used to do that, it's fun. I liked it. I learned a lot.
And then the Youth Board?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is. I'll do it, but I don't know what that is.
That's in conjunction with the schools, um, so we can reach out to the schools and let them know that you'd be-
All right.
Sounds good.
And then we have the Library Board.
And I'm sorry, I, you'll be able to tell me, and these have changed a little bit, as the makeup of the Library Board has changed, so I have to check with Joan if we get rid of, um, which each are fulfilling, but what is the new president's name?
Jennifer Trendell.
Okay.
And she has agreed, we talked about this at the last meeting, she's gonna-
Yeah.
Continue on.
And what Joan will do is send me, um, recommendations for the Library Board, um, that come from, from them, so. But these are the members at the current time.
Yep.
So for our sake, right now, it is appointing the village board member.
Okay. And then others there, you know, village citizens, Jacob Eckerman, Sue Christensen, um, school board rep, Kristen Martin, and you're there as the rep for the village. The only other thing I've got to do is I've got to get ahold of Laura Payne. She called me. Now, she was our Jefferson County Supervisor. She, she didn't run for reelection, but she's still involved with a couple of committees.
I can check with her.
Okay, good, I love that. So give her a call then, and see what, how Laura's doing. The Energy Subcommittee will continue, there, there isn't a lot happening right now, but I didn't want this to just dissolve. So Chuck is on it, Ted is on it, I am on it, Jeff Millsap and Dean Lund. I'll, I would chair that because before we had Wyatt Rose. So if there is something that, that requires this, and I, I just don't know, but I didn't feel like I wanted to get rid of it, because we do have a committee. And then finally, the Blue Jay Way Subcommittee, which is kind of a takeoff of the- The committee here with, um, the town of Oakland. And, um-
Good luck.
That would be you and I, Chris. I, um, I have it at, um- We could meet, but they're, you know, they're bringing in, really, they're, uh, he's not the president, but he will be the president, which is Ted Vratney, and, um-
He would be up for election for the-
Right, he'll be up for election, Mark.
But-
Yeah, so anyway, um, that would be you and I. So that's what we've got for, um, uh, our appointments. I got to tell you, this is where the work gets done, ladies and gentlemen. It's, it's right there, it's all of these. It's not really up here. Okay, um, anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the committee assignments.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion?
That includes the changes that were just recommended? The few changes that were discussed?
Yeah.
Your motion does?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? That was one of my things that I didn't get to, so I was in a water and sewer security meeting, where they thought, there was an argument over whether they could spend money, of what they budgeted for, and they had to bring it to the board and that. Is there like, oh wait, are you guys gonna play the policies so that that's a clear statement?
Well, well, we'll take that as another question that we'll, we'll address with you after. Thank you, Becky.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for-
There was gonna be a committee that was gonna oversee, like, builders that if they did follow the law, the laws, that they were gonna be fined and had so much time, and what, what, or who, what committee is that?
We don't have anything like that.
I think she's talking about the things that went through the Plan Commission, and there were a number of things that, that we did pass.
Yeah, yep.
Through the Plan Commission.
Yeah, and adding on the duties of the building inspector.
Okay, Plan Commission with the building inspector. Yes. All right, we got a motion and a second for approval of the appointment, subject to the changes that we've already articulated. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. Everybody's got a, some serious lifting to do here in this next year, so, we'll get through it. All righty, um, let's see, I'm gonna move on now. This is item D, Village Website. This is something that came forward. Lisa?
Yeah, there's been a lot of talk about our website and needing to revamp it, and, um, so there has been discussion if we should go out for an RFP to look at a new website. Our current website was brought on by a previous administrator. We hired somebody to help, um, fill the information, um. No training was included with the new website. The company is out of Canada. Chrissy's been doing what she can, trying to update. We've had issues, um. So it was discussed, we want to go out for an RFP, um, to look at a new website. We have in the past gotten some quotes from a cou, couple different companies, but we'd go out for an official RFP. I did check, our current contract does run from February until February, so is the timing good to go out for an RFP, start working on it where it could then take effect come the new year or in January? Uh, we need the approval from the board to go out for an RFP.
So, help me out here, we've, we've got-
Can we have a motion and then we discuss?
Sure, I, okay, does anybody care to make a motion?
That's what we're supposed to do, right?
Right.
We do and we don't.
For what?
Well, that's what you're supposed to do.
I'll make sure that I remind us of that the next time any of us get carried away and we start discussions. So if you want to, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion for an RFP for a new website to be developed.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Now I want to, the question-
Have we got to vote first?
No, 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 now we discuss. For discussion.
The, we have somebody, but they're, we're contractually obligated to these people, and they're not really-
Our annual contract that we sign with them is an, it's an annual contract, it, um, does go through Feb, until February.
Do you know how much we're paying these people to do nothing?
Well, they host our website.
They're hosting the site, that's what we're paying them for.
Just the hosting?
Just the hosting.
Okay, they're not doing any content?
No.
Okay.
So, so my question would be, rather than wiping out the site and- So, so my question would be, rather than wiping out the site and starting brand new, would it make more sense to have someone actually spend some time to learn the site and train on how to use the site properly so that we can do our updates there? Because I think that might be less expensive than changing to a whole new website?
We're gonna, we'll just have the board ask questions.
Some of the quotes we have gotten from people reaching out is not any more expensive than what we're paying now. Chrissy deals with the website more than I do. I think partially the website that we have is way more than we need for a village our size.
Oh, is that what part of the problem is? It's just bigger than what we need?
Part of the problem is it's very detailed and layers and, you know, that is more than we need. Like I said, no direct training from the company. Some people have tried coming in to help us navigate and we haven't been real successful in that, you know. Even the people who helped us set it up, it's like, how do we do this? Well, I tried lots of different things until it worked. Well.
Sure.
What are those lots of different things so we know when we need to change it in the future? So we haven't been real successful and in honesty, we haven't had a lot of time to sit and try to figure it out.
So, so in, in the RFP, can we include a line in there about making sure that CI.Cambridge.Wisconsin.com ends up as a top result when someone queries Cambridge, Wisconsin?
I don't know that we can. That is through and that's something we've looked at too. I don't know if it was with you or when Barb was still here. That's all in the Google and when things are, you know, we can't control how it comes up.
Yeah, you can manipulate some things there and add in keywords and do stuff so that you can show up higher in search results and.
Well, the way they had it before was that the, the website was linked to a dog, dog license application. So they were at least be able to limp to get there, but it was linked to the dog license application.
I mean, the only way I get there is I go through the Wikipedia page and hit the Cambridge website.
But since I just found out that we still have almost, you know, a whole year left, I wouldn't mind reaching after them. Granted, we said they're in Canada.
But still.
But if they would like to log in with me and then, you know, I could take good notes and at least to get us through.
Sure, sure, yep.
Finding an RFP or going through that whole process, that we're just not like limping around right now.
Okay, alright.
So this is unrelated to the ordinances that's held through the municode separate database?
Yeah.
And then you guys still maintain that database?
We do have to provide some updates to municode on the most recent ordinances passed. They update that for us. We have several, separate contract with them and it's a link off the website.
How is it unrelated to the ordinances when you can't even access the website unless going through Wikipedia and the website has all ordinances?
No, I just meant the updating of our village website and updating of the municode.
Yeah.
It's two different streams of, yeah, no, you can't get, you can't get to it. I'm tracking you. I'm just saying for the sake of the RFP, it wouldn't include.
So we had two statements made in the back and then I saw a hand raised and do we want to allow Kayla to say?
I mean, I think we all know how bad the website is. I don't think there's a question on that, so, I mean.
Yeah, you could canvas the village and then be one of the number.
Whoever we hire, I don't want to see it down for another year than that, for words.
So, so my, my, so when you develop the RFP, and I don't know, I'm sorry, was the motion for the development of an RFP or putting it out to RFP? Will this, will we have the ability to review the RFP to make sure it contains everything we want before we send that out?
Yeah, that can be provided to.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I think that would be good.
Because with your background, you're going to be able to give a little bit more insight on the technical aspect of what we need to request, right?
Yeah, I might be able to some, do some, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? We're, we're comfortable with the, the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, it carries. Let's move on. Discussion on possible action regarding the.
Sorry, sorry, just one follow-up item there. Do you think the, the RFP will be able to get to us in two weeks or in a month?
Not in two weeks.
You know, do you think in a month, we'd be able to do it in the May meeting? Otherwise, yeah, because, because quite frankly, it's probably going to take us a couple months to figure out who we're going to select. Then it's going to take them a few months to, and it would be nice if we could have them started on it before the February 1, so that it's completed by February, by that cutoff date?
That would be my goal.
Okay, alright, great.
That'd be a good idea.
So just want to keep that.
Proactive.
Timeline. Thank you.
Alright. Okay, item E underneath New Business, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding a Public Works Laborer, Recommendation from the Personnel Committee.
Yep, we met on April 19th. Todd Lord, new director of Public Works, was there, gave his feedback regarding the need for another laborer, Public Works laborer. So we did agree to put forth to the board a full-time, 40 hours per week laborer with a salary range of between $17 and $20 an hour.
And just to clarification, to fill the position from when Todd moved from laborer to director, to fill his position.
Creating a vacancy.
That he held as the laborer.
Right. So this is a net new position?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright. Anybody want to make a recommenda, or a motion?
So.
I'll second.
Alright, Eric and Ted, I guess that's what I heard here. Alright.
Chris and Ted.
Well, it was Chris and Ted. Chris and Eric, yeah. So, alright, so we've got Eric and Ted. Well, because you made the second, sorry, Chris.
I made the second.
Chris made the first.
Chris made the first and Ted seconded it.
Yeah, so we're good.
Okay, alright.
Moving on.
Alright.
Use your good ear.
Still hearing aids at Walmart.
Alright, all those in favor?
Was there any discussion?
Yeah.
Sure.
Again, so this was, this is the position, so I don't know because it's been a while, so, so who do we currently have and what roles are the people currently playing?
Since you were on the board last, we kind of, the board revamped Public Works. Todd is the director. I don't know if you've met.
Oh, you're Todd. Hi, Todd!
He's the director of Public Works. He moved up from the laborer position to director. Everybody underneath is getting cross-trained and so forth with specialties. Lee Farrar is still half, part-time.
Okay.
With majority of his time in Water and Sewer Department. Derek Tradel, majority of his time, 75% is Water and Sewer, also with Public Works. Bruce Crump, majority of his time is on the public works side, not the utility. Todd had been majority of his time in public works. So this person would be majority of time in public works, but also cross-trained in Water and Sewer.
Is Lee still part-time?
Lee is part-time.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the clarifications.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion that's been made and seconded, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries.
What's a hire, right? So it's money?
No, it's just to put the ad out.
Oh, okay, we haven't hired anyone yet?
No, I just needed approval to put it out.
Okay, moving on to Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Televising of Sanitary Sewer Lines, Recommendation from Water and Sewer Committee.
I can talk a little bit about that. By, by state law, we're supposed to televise so many linear feet of sewer line every year. It probably hasn't been done in seven or eight years. So to get up to date, the committee would like to do 20% a year for the next five years, which is with cost, I, I forgot how many linear feet we have, but.
This, it's in the packet, the proposal is for.
12,000.
12,000 linear feet at a cost of $1.23.
And one of the first lines that we want to televise is Johnson Street before we, we grind that road and, and repave it this summer. Because it'd be our luck not televising it and have to do something after we repave it. So it's probably makes sense to televise it first and if there's any, if there's any repairs to do to the sewer line or any other lines on that road, we'll do it before we pave it.
Okay.
And we do have proposals out there for, for televising, so we just have to make a decision.
Alright.
And let the contract out.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To televise the sewer lines.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question.
So is there an RFP out there for that?
We already, yeah, we already sent it out for, for people.
An official RFP did not go out, but the staff did reach out. This is the quote that they came back with from expeditors.
I'm, I'm bringing that up because I don't want there to be any surprises when I'm Chair of Water and Sewer and, oh yeah, by the way, we're going to be, you know, this is proposed.
The reason it's coming before the board right now is so we can get this, this line televised and.
I understand that, but are we going out for an RFP so we get a fair price? Or is, are we content with a buck 23 a linear foot?
And then my question is, Ted talked about there being, this, this being a five-year plan. Is, is this just for this year or is this the five-year plan?
It's going to be, it'll have to be a five-year plan to.
This, this quote is for this year's work of the first 20%.
Is the 12,000 feet just Johnson Street or?
No.
Do we have a?
20% of.
Okay, do we have a map of what streets they're planning to do?
The staff does have a map of where they would be going. It didn't originally start at Johnson Street, but it would change to start at Johnson Street and compass Johnson and move out from there 20%.
Todd?
Yeah.
Does this data then get uploaded to the ArcGIS?
Yes, and this will be uploaded. We're in the process of getting the new GIS system up and running and this would all be uploaded to the GIS now.
And then, and then, so, so we're, we've got the five-year plan to get us straight and then are we going to continue that every year? So this is going to be an ongoing expense pretty much every year, $15,000 a year to scope?
It, well, we have to verify. I think it is supposed to be every 10 years, the whole village. So once we get it done once, then we'll check with the.
It's actually every 10, Paula, but seeing it hasn't been done in so long.
No, I get, I get that, I get that. But, but my, my, the reason for my question is, I don't want us to get to the end of the five years and then say, okay, we're done now.
No.
No.
Okay, I want to make sure we've got an ongoing long-term plan. Okay, so we'll continue to do it. It's just we'll do 10% every year instead of having to do maybe the 20% every year.
Yeah.
Perfect, alright.
Yes, once it's on the. Yeah.
Website.
Great, great.
A lot, a lot of municipalities have it on their website.
Yeah, it'd be nice if, maybe we'll get that on the new website.
If they find something wrong that needs to be fixed right away, how does that get paid for? Is that, I see it's not part of the service per se. Is that something they would?
No, that.
That would go to Water and Sewer then to.
If, if it can wait for Water and Sewer, if it's a broken water line or something like that, that has to get fixed.
Yeah.
But that's just like today, that would happen.
That's right.
We'd know that, yeah. But any issues that are seen would go to the Water and Sewer Committee too.
And they'd have to create a plan around it and they'd have to figure out how to budget for it and how to pay for it.
It says all easement sewer will be viewed and quoted. I know for the new QuickTrip area, there was talk of an easement sewer over there. Is that, when you get to that point, just know that there are some easements, I believe, in our sewer, aren't there?
Maybe.
And the engineers are working with us on creating the map and the order.
Are we going to do an RFP for repaving the road?
Yes.
And then I think, I agree with Paula, I think we should do an RFP for the water too. It's, it's a big ticket item.
We should do what?
RFP for televising?
Yeah.
Do you want to do that?
I didn't, I didn't recommend that. Chris did.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
I think we should then.
Well, you're putting this off Ben Ted and it's not going to get done before Johnson Street.
I mean, I think we need to do.
Well, it's got to get done before Johnson Street.
I think we need to do this one because we have to get it done before Johnson Street.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so I.
We put it off long enough.
Yeah.
Separate motion then?
Well, I guess I'm gonna.
That's, that's the motion that's in front of us.
No, no, a separate one then to make sure that next year.
Oh, if we do next year, if we take it up to an RFP next year?
RFP next year.
Todd, do you recall if, what other companies, because weren't there like two or three that you had contacted or something?
Yeah, a lot of them were like in the dollar forty and probably down, but probably a little higher.
Okay.
Prices aren't going down, they're going up.
I understand what you're saying, Chris. They kind of did the work without doing a full bore RFP, from what I remember.
We gave you like three, three or four estimates.
To Water and Sewer?
Yeah.
To Water and Sewer.
Yeah. So I, I don't know if that addresses your concern or not, you know. It just seemed like it was the best one and then out of the three and then the.
Yeah, I like the idea of, with the urgency with Water Street. You know, I totally understand that. That makes perfect sense. But moving forward, I think we should get the best bang for a buck with an RFP, like Eric put out there, we can do that next year. So I don't believe I put a motion on the table. It was just a concern.
No, we still have the first motion on the table for this quote, but we could do a motion after for future years.
Alright, so we got a, a motion and a second to go out here with the expeditors. And they're going to look at 12,000 feet and charge us a dollar 23. So a total is $14,760. If there's no more discussion, it is money. So now we got to come back with roll call.
Trustee Kumbir.
Yes.
Schaefer Weiss.
Yes.
Breenett.
Yes.
Franklin Whitwer.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Alright, so that carries. Now, do we have any follow-up motions about anything with this? Next year's plan?
I think it's bad practice to project out, so when that comes again, we just have to, I'll let the administrator know that, to asterisk that so we can remember that we need to go out for it. But we can't, I don't think, I think it's a bad practice to project out, so.
Alright.
If you could just put that on a calendar or something, Lisa?
Yep, we're in the process of creating that.
We're going to televise so many linear feet.
Okay, alrighty. Okay, that takes care of the last item in New Business. Correspondence, League of Women Voters. Saw the card here. Lisa?
Yep.
Okay. Dear Lisa, for the countless hours you have dedicated to ensuring voters are able to make their voices heard, I send this brief note of appreciation. You make democracy happen even under extreme pressures and challenges of the past couple of years. Thank you, thank you. Marjorie Sutton, Volunteer, Wisconsin Women.
League of Women.
Yeah, just the postmark is in there. League of Women Voters. So, thank you. Yes. Okay, upcoming meetings.
Oh, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't have those on there. We have Plan Commission. We have Plank Commission on May ninth, Village Board May tenth, Library Board May eleventh, Water and Sewer, May seventeenth, Village Board, May twenty-fourth. One thing kind of tying to the next questions referrals.
Well, before we get there, one more though, meeting, if I could. May fifth, for anybody that's interested, the Fire and EMS will be meeting. And, that meeting is at the fire station, we had talked about doing it here, but now they want to do it there.
Okay. Talk to the next thing, we have been discussing with President McNally. A possible special board meeting next Tuesday, we have no scheduled board meetings or other meetings, if you want to.
I could talk about it, we've been talking about the idea, now that we have our new board all settled, that it might make sense to just talk about what we want to have for, for example, I mean, this is definitely open to your input about what you'd like to see, but the things that we were thinking about would be like procedures for agenda items, open meetings laws and, and what triggers a walk-in quorum, open records, the duty to respond to records requests versus answer questions. We were thinking about things along those lines, just sort of, kind of a refresher, setting the table with the new board.
I think that would be a great idea.
I do too.
Do I make a motion as such?
And we can just diff.
So, what's the date on that?
Next Tuesday is, yeah, is our one possibility.
Time?
Our normal, six-thirty, so, May third.
As long as it's a, as long as it's a open discussion, it's not a mother may I situation, I'm fine with it.
Well, I could certainly use a refresher course, I want to make sure I'm doing things here right, so I think it's a good idea.
And I know some of you have signed up for the League 101 class, this kind of brings it down one level to, you know, our board's procedures compared to the oversight of the league's wider scope.
I'd like that.
Okay, so this would be next Tuesday, six-thirty here. It's, it's a collection here of all the trustees, so, if you want to come to this, you can. Yeah, okay, alright. Other referrals to staff, future agenda items, I'm going to throw mine in there, the cleanup of the vineyards, addressing what was mentioned here earlier. Making sure that that's.
I will follow, we did, Todd reached out to them last week, they did go do some cleaning, reached out again to them this week. There was some question because there are some other builders, it's not just Vulcan out there, so.
That's true.
It, yeah, but.
I did talk to another builder though.
Yeah.
And he said that he had no trash, he's had no trash out there for three to four weeks because he's just waiting to do landscaping.
Yeah.
He's done. So, I don't, I don't know if Wilson's out there.
But Vulcan was going to come back out this week and clean some more, we have been in touch with him.
And I just checked today and it didn't look like it, and I saw that field over by, across the street on 134 there, it's just. It's murder.
We, we think the residents that said they were going to do a cleanup next week, we have been in contact with them. Talked to Todd, if they put the, what they collect at the LDK Park, our staff would then pick it up on Monday to dispose of it.
You know, Lisa, this is one of the first things, this is the first time it's really come up, but isn't it a developer responsible for the trash, that he writes, the developer writes the contracts or puts it out for bid to be built, et cetera? And, why is it the village's responsibility, or why is it being put on the village to clean it up? Or cleaning up their mess? You know, I've, I've done a lot of buildings and you have to be responsible for your own trash.
Yes and no, and I've talked to a chain, I've talked with our law enforcement and there's.
Yeah, I mean, that's true, the, the, there's chapter fifteen that talks about, you know, the, the obligation to maintain the debris. It's become a village issue just because people have brought it up to the village and so Lisa has decided to do what we can. But those things that are in chapter fifteen of our ordinances are really, I mean, officially, it's the building inspector's duty to enforce that.
To make sure it gets, I agree.
Which, you know, that's, you know, we just, we're past the point of having our building inspector involved in that. So, we don't really have a, a clear path through our ordinances.
Okay.
So, I think Lisa's trying to just kind of do what we can to respond.
And, just like other issues that we've had out there, our building inspector, our public works directors, you know, have been reaching out to Vulcan, they're cooperative to a degree. And, you know, unfortunately, we've had turnover in both of these positions. You know, even the police have been, you know, noise violations, they'll be out there talking to somebody about a noise violation and the next week, it's a different subcontractor out there, it's different people coming and going that has made it more difficult. But, the police, the building inspector, public works directors have all been reaching out, we've been trying to work cooperatively with.
But I also understand there's a homeowners association out there, and what is their role in all of this? I'd really like to know.
Okay, but that, that's kind of getting us into the whole, we'll, we'll bring it up, okay.
It's not the.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I have a few things for staff.
Alright, go ahead.
I, I would like to, I don't know if we need to have an agenda item to review having legal at every one of our village board meetings. I would, the change in the ordinance for the Economic Development Committee and then, and then adding Kayla to that, looking at, had Kayla added to the Economic Development Committee. I'd also then want to schedule an Economic Development Committee meeting. I'm not sure, Lisa, do I just work with you on getting that scheduled or?
Chris, he actually is staffing that committee.
Okay. Alright. I would like to have, and I don't know if anyone else on the board would be interested in this, this is something I did not do the last time I was on the board and I feel like, like I was remiss in not doing this. I would like to have a village, a tour of all of the village properties, all of the buildings, all of the locations, all of the things that we talk about in this meeting, I would like to have a tour of those so that I can have a picture in my head when we're talking about these different wellhouses or the artisan springs or all of the parks even that, I mean, I don't even know what areas we all know. So, I think it would be really helpful as a trustee to, to get an understanding of that, so.
I agree.
Yeah? Good, and then, and then I need to meet all of the staff of the village, because I don't know all of the village staff either. So, if we could, I don't, somehow arrange that, and I don't know if any other village board members would be interested in that.
I'm interested in that.
And it's something we could do as a precursor to a village board meeting to post it as a quorum that we're going around seeing these things.
That would be great.
It's a good deal.
How many sites are there? Roughly.
Well, it depends if, you know, we're looking at the dump, at the wellhouses, at well two, well three, at the lift station, at the, the different lift stations, the different parks, it's what you all want to see, the garage, the building here, you know.
I guess what I'm getting at is if you've, if you've got like nine, maybe it makes sense to do three per meeting. You know, we just drive here, there, and there, and then we can come back in and have a meeting, because we're not going to want to go and do.
No.
I would.
We could do it at a different time, not necessarily before a board meeting, to pick a different date that people are available to.
Might make sense.
To do a driving tour.
I think it's important to have infrastructure oversight.
Right, and, and again, it, it's not required, so if you didn't want it, do it, Mark, you wouldn't have to. You, you, you may know where all these places are already, I, I don't, and so I feel like it would be, I, I would be more helpful on the board to have an understanding.
I was just trying to avoid having nine of them and then having a board meeting because I know.
We can do it a different day.
Okay. There's one thing I don't want us to do, and I've been talking to Lisa, this last meeting that we had for the board was four hours and there are people here that have young children, plus, you know, the audience, and that's just not fair, you know, four-hour running, so.
Well, one night you could do the wells.
Yeah.
And then you got a good picture of what's going on with well number two and, and what we're planning to spend the money on well number three.
Okay, well, Lisa could put together a plan for that.
Yeah, and I can send some dates out and.
Alright, anything else?
Sounds like a field trip then, right?
Yes, I love field trips.
Okay.
I would like to have Audit Finance meeting, now that we actually have it settled who's on what.
Alright.
Can, can we get an email of when all these meetings are, because usually I, I go by this and then I put it on my calendar.
That's what I said, I apologize, I didn't have it on here. I will set the ones that we have already scheduled and then ones that need to be scheduled.
And maybe add the Fire Commission meetings when they are, every month? When, or when they are.
Yeah, usually I do include it in the update when we have the notices, that one just came out this weekend.
Okay.
Has the Board of Review stuff been set? Did I see something on our website about that?
Um, we do have the dates set.
Like, it's May and June, something in May and June, I thought I saw on the website?
I, I have to double-check, but, yeah. Open book would be first, the Board of Review is second. And there will be some training coming up for members of Board of Review, if you'd like to take it. State law has changed where now somebody has to take it every year, it used to be every two years and I would usually take it. But, as soon as I get those training schedules, I'll, I'll send it out to members.
Good, good, and I did set up my email today for CICambridge dot Wisconsin US, so please use that as my only email address.
Yes.
I will check it every day.
So, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was certain, like, Public Works or Water and Sewer, that there's a certain standard of when that meeting is, it's like every, like, third Wednesday or something like that, is that still the case?
For, yep, our board. It's, the board is second and fourth Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Plank Commission is the second Monday of every month.
Okay.
Water and Sewer is the third Tuesday of every month. CRWC is the third Wednesday. Library Board is the second Wednesday of each month. Joint Law Enforcement is every other month, the first Tuesday, or second Tuesday of the month before our board meeting. So, they do not meet next month, but would meet the following, so in June, that's every other month. I believe those are all of the standing dates. I don't think I'm missing any.
Okay, so you're going to get Audit Finance, Eric wants to get something scheduled?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Referrals to staff, future agenda items. Okay. Fourteen. Care to make one? We're still old school.